All right, today is July 23rd, 2024. Frederick County School Board Special Call Meeting. The time is 18:05. Madam Chair, what is the will of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda that's before us this evening.
Second. We have a motion to approve the agenda, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now have an agenda.
And Mr. Chair, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, resignations, leave of absence, information only, and substitute tutors pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot 1, and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot 2.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We have a motion to go into close.
Second.
Why, thank you. It has been motioned and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session. We will reconvene at 1900 hours. Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, return from closed session.
Second. There has been motioned that we return from closed session and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Sturtevant?
Aye.
And, Mr. Sturtevant, we have, or, Mr. Chair, we have two motions out of closed session. And I move-
Point of order, are we...
So, Mr. Chair, that would be up to you. You can either go ahead and approve the motions now or we can go to recess and approve them when we come back. That's totally up to you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I move that we recess until 7:00 PM to allow the public to get here at a time of the matter as advertised.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. I second.
All right. It has been motioned to recess until 1900 hours and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion on that matter? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will be recessed until 1900 hours.
All right.
And Mr. Chair, I move to reconvene the open session for the Frederick County School Board.
Second.
Moved to reconvene and it's been properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
And Mr. Chair, we have two motions out of closed session. The first motion, I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion on that? Do we need to do roll call on those or we could just?
No, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries.
And Mr. Chair, I move to approve the release of students A, B, C, D, and E from compulsory attendance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to...
Approve the release.
Approve the release of those students from compulsory attendance and it has been properly seconded. Thank you. Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you.
And those conclude the motions at a closed session.
All right. Please, let's observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you for that. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Vice Chair, what is the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda?
And Mr. Chair, we have a consent agenda before us. I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it has been motioned that we approve the consent agenda and has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the matter? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a consent agenda. And we have student and staff...or do we need to read the minutes? No, we don't. Correct?
No, sir. Correct.
All right, so student and staff recognitions. I will turn it over to Dr. Hummer then.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have four administrative appointments that we would like to introduce to you all, those in the audience and those watching from home. First, I would like to call up our new Assistant Director of Facilities, Mr. Zachary Pollard. If you can come on down, please. Bringing nine years of facility services experience in a variety of roles, Mr. Pollard also served in the United States Air Force. Thank you for your service for nine years and is now a member of the West Virginia Air National Guard. Mr. Pollard holds an Associate's Degree in Electrical and Mechanical Technologies from the Community College of the Air Force and a Bachelor of Business Administration in Project Management from Liberty University. Please join me again in welcoming Mr. Pollard. Welcome.
Thank you, Board. Dr. Hummer. Looking forward for my experience to help out the rest of the facilities team servicing Frederick County Public Schools and the rest of the team here. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I would like to call up our new Assistant Director of Special Instructional Services, Mrs. Kylan Kaufman. She comes into this new role from her current position as an Assistant Principal at Evendale Elementary School. Mrs. Kaufman brings 21 years of experience in a variety of roles, all within Frederick County Public Schools. Mrs. Kaufman holds a Bachelor's of Science in Educational Psychology from Shenandoah University, a Master's in Education in Curriculum and Instruction from the University of Virginia, a graduate certificate in Leadership and Supervision from James Madison University, and is currently pursuing her Doctorate in Educational Leadership from Shenandoah University. Very excited for you on that journey. So please join me again in welcoming Mrs. Kaufman into her new role.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer and members of our school board for your service to our students, our staff, and their school community. I'm a proud Frederick County Public Schools graduate. Jameswood High School colonels. I'm a proud Frederick County Public Schools parent, and I'm looking forward to this new opportunity to serve our students with disabilities.
Great. Welcome. Thank you. Next up is our new Director of Assessment Reporting and Program Evaluation, Mrs. Crystal Nicola. Come on up, please. She recently has been serving as the Coordinator of Assessment since 2021. Ms. Nicola also brings with her an additional 17 years of teaching, assistant principal, and principal experience, also all within Frederick County Public Schools. Mrs. Nicola holds a Bachelor's of Science in Psychology and a Master's of Science in Education from Shenandoah University, as well as a graduate certificate and program evaluation from West Virginia University. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Nicola.
Thank you to the board and Dr. Hummer. I'm so excited about this opportunity and the unique way that I'll now be able to serve our community, and I'm looking forward to bringing great things to our department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nicola. And next up, Mr. Chair, we were just notified that Mrs. Spielman is actually out of the state right now on vacation, so I will like to announce that real quick, but there's no one that's going to come up to the podium. So last but not least is our new Assistant Principal of Admiral Byrd Middle School, Mrs. Melissa Spielman. Ms. Spielman brings 20 years of experience working for Frederick County Public Schools. We see a theme here. And in conjunction, several years at Laurel Ridge Community College. She holds a Bachelor's of Science in Agriculture and Applied Economics with a minor in Business from Virginia Tech University, a Master's in Agricultural Education from the University of Illinois, and an Educational Leadership graduate certificate from James Madison University. So please join me in welcoming Mrs. Spielman. And Mr. Chair, that's all the administrative appointments we have for you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. We are now at the point of our agenda for citizen comments. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting from members of the public, which include residents of Frederick County, Virginia, including residents of Winchester City, Virginia, FCPS students, parental and legal guardians of FCPS students, FCPS employees, and businesses located within Frederick County, Virginia. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals
All right, the time is 19:01.
And Mr. Chair, I move to reconvene the open session for the Frederick County School Board.
Second.
Moved to reconvene and it's been properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
And Mr. Chair, we have two motions out of closed session. The first motion, I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion on that? Do we need to do roll call on those or we could just?
No, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries?
And Mr. Chair, I move to approve the release of students A, B, C, D, and E from compulsory attendance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to...
Approve the release.
Approve the release of those students from compulsory attendance and it has been properly seconded. Thank you. Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you.
And those conclude the motions at a closed session.
All right, please, let's observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you for that. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Vice Chair, what is the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda?
And Mr. Chair, we have a consent agenda before us. I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it has been motioned that we approve the consent agenda and has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the matter? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a consent agenda. And we have student and staff... or do we need to read the minutes? No, we don't. Correct?
No, sir, correct.
All right, so student and staff recognitions. I will turn it over to Dr. Hummer then.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have four administrative appointments that we would like to introduce to you all, those in the audience and those watching from home. First, I would like to call up our new Assistant Director of Facilities, Mr. Zachary Pollard. If you can come on down, please. Bringing nine years of facility services experience in a variety of roles, Mr. Pollard also served in the United States Air Force, thank you for your service, for nine years and is now a member of the West Virginia Air National Guard. Mr. Pollard holds an Associate's Degree in Electrical and Mechanical Technologies from the Community College of the Air Force and a Bachelor of Business Administration in Project Management from Liberty University. Please join me again in welcoming Mr. Pollard. Welcome.
Thank you, Board. Dr. Hummer, looking forward for my experience to help out the rest of the facilities team servicing Frederick County Public Schools and the rest of the team here. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I would like to call up our new Assistant Director of Special Instructional Services, Mrs. Kylan Kaufman. She comes into this new role from her current position as an Assistant Principal at Evendale Elementary School. Mrs. Kaufman brings 21 years of experience in a variety of roles, all within Frederick County Public Schools. Mrs. Kaufman holds a Bachelor's of Science in Educational Psychology from Shenandoah University, a Master's in Education in Curriculum and Instruction from the University of Virginia, a graduate certificate in Leadership and Supervision from James Madison University, and is currently pursuing her Doctorate in Educational Leadership from Shenandoah University. Very excited for you on that journey. So please join me again in welcoming Mrs. Kaufman into her new role.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer, and members of our school board for your service to our students, our staff, and their school community. I'm a proud Frederick County Public Schools graduate, Jameswood High School Colonel's. I'm a proud Frederick County Public Schools parent, and I'm looking forward to this new opportunity to serve our students with disabilities.
Great, welcome. Thank you. Next up is our new Director of Assessment Reporting and Program Evaluation, Mrs. Crystal Nicola. Come on up, please. She recently has been serving as the Coordinator of Assessment since 2021. Ms. Nicola also brings with her an additional 17 years of teaching, assistant principal, and principal experience, also all within Frederick County Public Schools. Mrs. Nicola holds a Bachelor's of Science in Psychology and a Master's of Science in Education from Shenandoah University, as well as a graduate certificate and program evaluation from West Virginia University. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Nicola.
Thank you to the board and Dr. Hummer. I'm so excited about this opportunity and the unique way that I'll now be able to serve our community, and I'm looking forward to bringing great things to our department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nicola. And next up, Mr. Chair, we were just notified that Mrs. Spielman is actually out of the state right now on vacation, so I will like to announce that real quick, but there's no one that's going to come up to the podium. So last but not least is our new Assistant Principal of Admiral Byrd Middle School, Mrs. Melissa Spielman. Ms. Spielman brings 20 years of experience working for Frederick County Public Schools. We see a theme here, and in conjunction, several years at Laurel Ridge Community College. She holds a Bachelor's of Science in Agriculture and Applied Economics with a minor in Business from Virginia Tech University, a Master's in Agricultural Education from the University of Illinois, and an Educational Leadership Graduate Certificate from James Madison University. So please join me in welcoming Mrs. Spielman. And Mr. Chair, that's all the administrative appointments we have for you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. We are now at the point of our agenda for citizen comments. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting from members of the public, which include residents of Frederick County, Virginia, including residents of Winchester City, Virginia, FCPS students, parental and legal guardians of FCPS students, FCPS employees, and businesses located within Frederick County, Virginia. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups, organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker should approach the podium to speak to the school board. Speakers are expected to show appropriate courtesy to the school board, and the school board is committed to showing respect and courtesy to all citizens. Comments that are not protected under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution will not be tolerated. This includes comments that are vulgar, obscene, threatening, and comments that are intended to incite violence or other breaches of the peace. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. Violation of the guidelines will result in the chair ruling the speaker out of order. Continued violations will result in removal from the premises. The chair has a discretion concerning public partition at the school board meetings. School board meetings are taped-recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of the official minutes. And the first person signed up this evening is Mr. Patton.
My name's Robert Patton. I'm from the Bat Creek District. I am retired and a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. At the February meeting of the Frederick County School Board, Mr. Atkins was a topic of discussion in regards to his conduct and behavior. Several individuals spoke on behalf of Mr. Atkins in that he showed he should receive due process and is innocent until proven guilty. I'd like to point out that Mr. Atkins accepted a plea deal and pled guilty to two federal misdemeanor charges. He received his due process in the federal criminal justice system. Mr. Atkins referred to the federal criminal justice system as being two-tiered. I ask you to explain your remarks. What are the two tiers? If you don't like the federal criminal justice system, then don't commit criminal acts that put yourself in situations that you have total control over. In reference to your statement that it's going to take a wrecking ball to remove you, you alone, by your defiant continued pattern of unacceptable conduct and behavior, will be your own downfall. For this school board to refuse to discuss or comment on Mr. Atkins' conduct and behavior in a public forum is to put your seal of approval on it. Each one of you on the board, the school board, is chosen to be elected public servants. You serve at the pleasure of the citizens of Frederick County. The way in which you serve reflects on every citizen of Frederick County. Your character, conduct, and behavior in your personal and professional lives matters. Public service requires public trust. If you violate the trust of the public or an individual, you risk losing that trust forever. The school board of Frederick County is an institution dedicated to serving the public. Integrity is the foundation of professionalism and credibility. As a citizen of Frederick County, I ask each of you to evaluate yourself in the performance of your duties. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Next up, we have Tiffany Cooper. Ms. Cooper? Okay, next, James Mulder.
Good evening, Board. I was here last week and observed the meeting with you guys and the Board of Supervisors, and the new school capital improvement of close to $200 million. The county's budget last year approved was, what, $250 something? So the school board's asking for roughly 70% of, you know, if we dealt it all, dealt it all out in one year, 70% of the county budget for improvements in the new school. Doing some research on my own, 10 months ago, Stafford County High School approved a new school of roughly 300 square feet, up 300,000 square feet, at $144 million coming out at about $480 a square foot. What I saw last week, at 253,000 square feet, was going to be roughly almost $600 a square foot. Additional $120 a square foot, is that the cost that we've incurred, a 20% increase in 10 months and building cost? I don't, I don't know, but $151 million is a lot of money, taxpayer money, money that y'all are going to ask all of us taxpayers in this county to pay interest on for years and years to come to build these projects. Come up with a real budget, a real plan, and also have a recommendation, maybe, has the board looked into like a charter school or academic high school to where you build a school, you leave off all the sports, all the athletics? Say you open this school up for 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, your, all your students that are coming from the three high schools right now that are taking the AP college courses, they apply and they go to this new school, so you're not teaching AP English for 10th, 11th, and 12th graders at three different schools, you do it at one school. You could eliminate a lot of the cost of all the extracurricular stuff that way. You could also, the students that went to that school, if they still wanted to participate in a sport, they could go back to their school that they come from and play their sports there. Also, Mr. Atkins, I wasn't going to say anything about this, but the two-tier court system, court system that the gentleman just spoke of, I believe four years ago, we all witnessed it when cities were looted and burned everywhere in America. Nobody did anything about it because they were liberal democratic cities, and then when proud veterans, Americans, go to our Capitol to voice our opinion, we get arrested just for being there. People are being arrested that never went into the Capitol just for being there, but I just wanted to address that while I was up here. Thank you, Board.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Mr. Nury is next.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Brian Nury. I'm a resident in the Apeken District. Last week's joint meeting was the first in years, and it's been far too long. We heard a lot of good ideas coming from that meeting, using the blueprints from other systems possibly, or reopening bidding processes. Some were not so good, like shuffling students around into different schools to be in eighth and a half grade or something like that, but the worst idea is to do nothing at all. Nothing is what got us an overinflated cost to build this new school. Nothing is what got us in overcrowded schools. Nothing is what's getting us security issues and marginalized test scores. To steal a line, this can has been kicked down the road so far that the can has lost its labels and is so full of holes it can't even be called a can anymore. No one on this board and no one in our community is asking for the money to be paid upfront. $152 something million, that would be impossible. Major infrastructure projects are paid off over years. We've done it before, but somehow in 2024, it has suddenly become impossible? I have a hard time believing that. This board has a legal duty to act on this, both from Article 8 of the State Constitution and State Code Title 22.1-79, most notably Section 3, that states each board shall, quote, "care for, manage, and control the property of the school division and provide for the erecting, furnishing, equipping, non-instructural operating of necessary school buildings and appurtenances, and the maintenance thereof by purchase, lease, or other contracts." A lot of people in this state fought very, very hard for the right of students to be able to go to public schools. That section of the article, of the State Constitution was only amended in 1975. Do you know what was happening before? We had two different school systems. A lot of people fought hard for our public school system to even exist. This issue is now 10 years in the making. 10 years of county growth, 10 years of inaction from both this board and the Board of Supervisors. The time for creative solutions is far behind us. It's time for this board to make the final resolution to get this school built. With perseverance, the snail made it to the ark, and with this decision, our perseverance will be paid off, and we'll finally have this at an end. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, hopefully I say this right. Is it John Fredrickson? Did I say that correctly? Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is John Fredrickson. I'm a resident of Frederick County. I'm a retired school superintendent for 34 years. I've built a number of schools this size, a little bit larger, a little bit smaller. I know a little bit about that kind of thing. The first thing you need to know is it's not going to get cheaper. The price you see there is probably going to be inflated if you wait a year or two or three. Second thing, the schools in a, high school, the fourth high school gives you a chance to have everybody behind brick walls. You have better security. You do not have that same level of security when you have a bunch of portable units out in the backyard. The third thing is, if you're looking at quality of education, the principal teacher, that's his official title really, the principal teacher, needs to have a setting where they can walk down the hall and they can check on this, check on that. If they've got to go out into a different building on a rainy day, on a snowy day, and stuff like that, it's going to get reduced. When the principal's teacher sees really high-quality education going on, he or she can go out and make sure that that person's ideas, that person's good skills are brought and spread out across the whole school system and that building. By the same token, if they see something that maybe needs a little coaching, they can do that as well. And finally, you're going to have less discipline. I've built buildings that, and I didn't personally build them, I worked on construction school crews when I was in college and high school, but when the walls of the hallway are a little bit wider, you have fewer bumps and action within the students. That reduces the amount of discipline that you have to deal with in the classroom, and hopefully the principal and the counselors and other staff can deal more with student performance and less with students screwing around. Thank you for your opportunity to address, answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Doty Stottlemyre.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members, and administration. My name is Doty Stottlemyre, and I'm from the Shawnee Magisterial District. I come tonight to voice my concerns over the cost of the proposed high school and the impact it's going to have. The resolution you guys are going to be voting on tonight is asking the county to provide funding for basically $197 million for the proposed CIP. This is also in addition to the yearly ask for appropriations. What I'd like to say comes not from napkin math, but from old-fashioned kitchen table math, which is what most fiscally responsible families have to use. Kitchen table math occurs when you sit down with your paycheck and you pay or you put aside money for the costs and potential costs you must in order to survive. After that, if you're among the blessed, you may have money left for things called wants. If you don't, then you do without or you scale back on the wants until you can afford them. When I have to maintain or improve my home, my kitchen math prompts me to do my due diligence and research options before deciding to spend the money or go into debt. I'd like to suggest that more of that researching should happen when the question of $197 million comes on the taxpayer. Perhaps we could look at other architectural firms to render drawings rather than the same firm that's given us the last three or four major school projects. Other options include returning to traditional classrooms and designs, which would absolutely create more space. All the beautiful designs have not made much difference in the SOLs, so maybe we quit doing the same thing over and over, thinking we're going to get a different result, and at least consider different vendors and paring down designs. What is going to be different, however you slice and dice it, is going to be the taxes we residents have to pay on our homes. Some of the proponents of this school have said, if you don't have a child in the school system, then there's no skin in the game. If you'd like to exempt me from my portion and only raise taxes on parents, that would be true. Otherwise, those taxes are my skin in the game. And Mr. Atkins smiles. You know, if we jump the rate to the Loudon Counties, which depending on where you live in that county, is anywhere from 85 cents to $4.10 per hundred, well, that napkin math might be able to figure out what the effect on Frederick County residents would be. I think my mom's phrase, she said to me early in my life, was that I best not let my wants hurt me, because I seem to have a champagne appetite on a beer bottle pocketbook. Thank you.
Thank you. The last signature, or last name on the list is Jennifer Hall.
Hello. Jennifer Hall, Shawnee District. First, I want to thank each of you who is in support of the fourth high school. Ooh, accent there. Mr. Atkins, I truly do appreciate all you're doing to move the project forward, but I simply cannot ignore some other things that I have to talk about tonight. You've made it clear that you're not going to resign despite serving jail time for storming the U.S. Capitol and helping rioters through a window. News outlets have widely reported under Facebook messages about drinking inside the Capitol, but they've only told part of the story. Page 10 of the FBI's Criminal Complaint, I'll read it to you. Miles says, "Bro, I'm watching on the news waiting for a ducking riot to start." Miles's friend said that. Miles says, "I'm getting food then fighting. I drank Fireball and Coors Light in the Capitol." His friend said, "You better go out without a bang. Don't let it be for nothing." Miles says the word, I'm going to spell it for you, N-I-G-G-A. You know this. I read the same, excuse me, I'm shaking, so I hope it doesn't come across to you. I read the same exchange to my mom as we sat at the kitchen table on July 4th. My eight-year-old son, who's biracial and his father is black, was sitting next to me. His response, "No, Mom, don't say that. Please stop," I said. He was very visibly upset by what I had told him. "Son, I'm not saying it. I'm reading to what someone else said. I don't want to hear it," he said. Well, what if I told you the person who said it was an elected official, someone who represents our school board, someone who's supposed to make decisions for our school and all the children who represent the school you go to? He said, "What? That's unacceptable. That is unacceptable. You offended my eight-year-old child, who takes pride in his black heritage. It's my duty to stand up for him and our growing minority commute population in Frederick County who deserve better than a school board member who repeatedly uses racial slurs." Page three, the same document, shows you used the word the same, the day before while coordinating a ride to the U.S. Capitol. Your casual use of the word on consecutive days suggests it's part of your daily language, so I ask you, Miles, why? Whether it ends with an ER or an A, the intent of the word is the same. It's derogatory, hurtful, and offensive, and do you even know why? Well, I'll educate you. The term has been used for centuries to justify the oppression of black people during slavery and systemic racism, considering how our black teachers in the district will feel when they hear this. It's no wonder we can't keep minority educators, and they're leaving in droves, by the way, for anyone who does not know. This isn't the first time you've been accused of making racial comments. Remember the devil horns? A quick Google search and a Fox News story uncovered inappropriate social media posts you made about blackface in 2015. At that time, you made the comment, "While I have made mistakes in the past, I'm moving forward," but you're not moving forward, you're moving backward. How can you make impartial and unbiased decisions about our schools and students when racial slurs are part of your daily vocabulary? It will speak volumes if the rest of the board doesn't address this and allows this behavior to continue. This is 2024, not 1960. Our students, teachers, and community deserve better.
Thank you. That is all that has signed up. Is there anyone who did not sign up that wishes to speak this evening? Okay, moving on. Next, we have reports. Superintendent's report, sir.
All right, thank you very, very much, Mr. Chair. So we are beyond excited for the start of this upcoming school year, which is a little over three weeks away. I don't know about you all, but this is the second-best time of year, right behind graduation. The start of the school year is a time of rejuvenation, starting something new, and anticipation of celebrating all of the great things that we know our students are going to accomplish. We have our new staff coming back next week, starting on July 29th, and I invite all of you to attend our Ignite Kickoff Session on July 30th at Frederick County Middle School. We'll get you some more specific details there, and our planned activities are a welcome tunnel for our new staff, a celebration, and a centralized learning opportunities for all of our students. and a centralized learning opportunities for all of our new employees. They will be working on getting ready for the year that entire week, and we are very excited and thankful for all of our new staff. So hopefully, you all can join us during that time. We will then have all of our other staff come back the week of August 5th. And they were also given two additional days this school year, which we are very excited about, to give our staff additional time to get prepared and ready for this upcoming school year. We also have our open house for all of our high schools on August 8th, middle school open house on August 12th, and elementary on August 13th. And again, I invite all of you to attend, and if you want more information on that, please let me know. And we are very excited to welcome all of our staff and our students into this upcoming school year. We're also taking on two new events this year, which we are very, very excited about to start this school year off on a positive note. We are going to be hosting a school-wide, what we're calling a tailgate, right out here in the James Wood and Central Office parking lot, and we are going to be providing free haircuts, school materials, information. Uh-oh, Mr. Bell, you coming out? And as well as other opportunities for all of our parents, students, and staff to attend. I hope you all can come, and we're very, very excited to get this school year started off on the right foot. We're also going to be hosting a virtual convocation this year on August 13th, where we're going to be putting together a welcome video for all staff, and we're going to have all central office staff out in the buildings. When the video is shown, we're going to provide food for all of our staff, and we're looking forward to the opportunity to, again, kicking this school year off on the right foot. Last but not least, this is going to be the second year that we're going to be starting, that we're going to be hosting our Transition Day. Very, very excited about this. And for those that don't know, this is going to be the Wednesday, August 14th, where we're going to have all of our kindergartners, sixth graders, and freshmen starting the school year off first. So they're going to get the whole building to themselves. This is also a great opportunity for parents to get acclimated to the drop-off or getting their child on the bus with all of the other stressors that come along with getting acclimated to a new building. We received a lot of positive feedback on this. Last year, all of the staff here in Central Office will be out helping on this particular day and making sure that it goes off without a hitch. And we are looking forward to getting this school year started off on the right foot. So with that, Mr. Chair, I wanted to provide that information because our next board meeting on August 20th happens after all these events, so I just wanted to make mention of those. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is unfinished business, CIP Resolution. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So the resolution, CIP Resolution, was posted to the agenda after the meeting from last week, and that is before you all for review and approval. My team and I are here to answer any specific questions, but just a brief summary. This is a proposal for the three projects. We have the fourth high school, the expansion of Jordan Springs, as well as the expansion of Middletown. Another specific that is embedded in this resolution is that we are asking the county to utilize the proffer dollars towards these projects, which, again, would reduce some of the cost, and that we would move forward with VPSA bonding in the fall. Now, again, that could change or adjust based on what the county says when this is approved or not approved. But once you all vote on it this evening, that will go downtown for them to consider, and then they will review the next steps, and I will keep you all posted as I hear about future meetings for discussion if this is approved this evening. And of course, we're available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do we need to read this before?
I would. I don't think so, Mrs. Jordan. It would be just to approve the CIP Resolution as presented, and if there's any adjustments or amendments, you would do that. We would recommend you do a roll call vote, of course, and then, of course, open up for any discussion. Mrs. Jordan, would you agree or disagree?
I would agree.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I move that the school board approve and adopt the Resolution Title Resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors to issue general obligations, school bonds for school purposes, and consenting to the issuance thereof as presented.
We have a motion to accept the CIP Resolution, is that correct?
Second.
And it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion by members of the board?
Mr. Chair, I have some discussion.
Madam Vice Chair.
So, Dr. Hammer, I just want to clarify a few things for the public that are in the gallery as well as those watching. There's a lot of big numbers on here, and the one, the headliner, if you will, is the fourth high school. The price on here is one-hundred-and-fifty-one million, six-hundred thousand for the fourth high school. I want to make it crystal clear that that includes ten million dollars' worth of escalation costs, meaning if we drag our feet on this project, it will go up to the one-fifty-one-six. It was actually quoted to us at one-forty-one-six. Am I correct on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And also, too, I want to make it abundantly clear, RRMM, the architectural firm that gave us this estimate, this is the equivalent of going to the bank and saying, "Hey, my credit is worthy enough to purchase a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house," meaning you can't go back and purchase something greater than that. And RRMM is part of our task order, which is a broad order of items that are completed for the school within a certain timeframe as per the task order contract. They offered to go ahead and draw up a sketch for us, which is where this number comes from. It is an estimate. So when we go through the, if this passes the board tonight, and if it passes the board of supervisors, we will then put this out for competitive bid. Lots of people, everyone who has his privy to the VP, VPPA process, will have access to this bid. It may come in under. In fact, I feel fairly certain, based on historical biddings, that it will. So I want to make that crystal clear. This is not a lump-sum check being delivered to us from the Board of Supervisors and ultimately the taxpayers. This will be put out for bid, should it be approved. Also, I want to make it clear. When I ran for this position, I told my constituents that I was neither for the fourth high school nor against it. I was neither for an expansion of Middletown, or correction, Millbrook or Shrando, or against it. I wanted to see all the data, all the numbers, and do my own math and use third-party data to do so. I have done that. This board, through Mr. Atkins' leadership on the Building and Grounds Committee, which I am honored to be a member of, we have gone through and we have entertained multiple scenarios, one being creating a whole nother ninth grade and spreading it out throughout the middle schools. We don't have the capacity to do that, number one. Number two, another idea that we received was to move the 12th grade up to Laurel Ridge. They don't have the capacity either, and I'm not quite clear on who exactly would pay the tuition. Another option that we looked at was the magnet school option. Problem with the magnet school option, which was actually my idea based on constituent feedback, problem with it is we'll outgrow it at the pace we're going. This is not a burgeoning problem. This is a current problem. This is not a Democrat problem. It's not a Republican problem. It is a Frederick County citizen problem. We are growing. We are overgrown at this point, and we're growing by 1.1% per year, year over year, for the next ten years. And the reason that's not forecasted out more is because the data gets diluted, but I can guarantee you, based on data that was presented in the Winchester Stars article yesterday, as well as the data that I have seen, it's going to continue to grow. So we have a problem currently here that we need to solve. I would be derelict in my duty as a school board member if I did not present the best option for the students, the best option for the taxpayer. This is the long-term, most fiduciarily responsible option for the taxpayer, and it is the best option for our students. And I will say this, RRMM's proposal is very nice and pretty. It had a lot of fluff in it. There's, there will be things cut from that proposal, and I am sure there will be things once this does go out to bid, should it pass through the Board of Supervisors, that we will cut from this. And to that end, the majority of this board has only been on this board for seven months. So in that seven months, we have turned back seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars back to the Board of Supervisors. If it was Diana's world, I would divide that by ninety-one thousand taxpaying citizens of Frederick County and cut you each a check. But Virginia State Code doesn't let me do it. So that's not an option. We have to turn it back to the Board of Supervisors. It goes into the general fund, and it is up to them to use it as they see fit. Furthermore, based on the estimate from the first school board, our previous school board on the fourth high school, the one-hundred-and-fifty-three-point-two million, we chopped that down by twelve million dollars. That's just in seven months. I can guarantee you, there will be more cuts. We realize this is a big price tag, and just because you're a fiscal conservative does not mean that money will not be spent. It means it will be spent well. And as long as I am Chair of the Finance Committee, and the majority of my members here are on my committee, we will do that. We will be fiscally responsible with your dollars. It's my dollars, too. It's everyone's dollars. But this is a need, and it needs to be done now, as opposed to later. So my vote on this will be yes. Those are all my comments, Mr. Chair.
Any other board member comments on this subject?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Erskine.
So, much like Mrs. Klein, when I first asked to be appointed to the board, one of the things I said in earnest, and I'm glad I was given the opportunity to say it then, is that I hadn't formed an opinion, one way or the other, on a fourth high school, let alone some of these very much-needed expansions. But I want to try to reframe this maybe in a way that, that will bring around some folks. I got a letter the other day from the mortgage company telling me how short my escrow was, not because of anything other than hyper-inflated home values in this region. The school board of any locale is responsible for providing our children a quality education. That's it. The Board of Supervisors is responsible for paying for it. For those who have a problem with us needing to build another school, your objection is probably best voiced across town, where I'm going to be voicing my objection at the staggering rate of development in Frederick County. This board's job is to educate the kids that have already been let in, right? That's one of the points I made during the work session, was that we don't get to decide how many passengers to let on the ship. We have to make sure there's enough deck chairs for everybody. That would be the first thing. The second thing, when it comes to this high school, I have a, I have a hard time wrapping my mind as a, as an educator. Clearly, I'm not in it for the money. One-hundred-and-fifty-one million dollars blows my mind anyway. But I can guarantee you, knowing some of the folks on this board and the work that they're doing, we are already doing it more responsibly than I've seen it done any other time. We're not talking about building another Hilton Resort like the money that was wasted on Frederick County Middle School. And as a taxpayer, I have to tell you, I was enraged by that. I won't support that kind of mistake a second time, right? What I'm seeing so far is a fiscally responsible response to a statutory obligation that we have to educate kids. Our schools are overcrowded and unsafe. And as somebody who takes particular exception to school safety, having been at Tech, I've got to tell you, trailers are not an acceptable solution. So I'm not happier than anybody else about that escrow running short and, and them thinking that I live in a mansion, when I live in a normal, single-family home, but I also can't control those things. What I can control is making sure that the children in the Red Bud District get the education that they're legally entitled to, and that the members of this board see that I kept a commitment when I asked to be on the board. I think that it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that we direct those concerns in the places where they can be addressed, right? I know I'll be there, and I know I have some thoughts for my member, as well as for the other folks on the Board of Supervisors, but I came away from last week's meeting encouraged and feeling positive about where we're headed. And I saw a more positive rapport between the two bodies than what I've read about in the paper for years now. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, so this fourth high school, my thoughts on that. Yeah, I've been pretty pro-fourth high school lately. I came onto this board not pro-fourth high school. I was all about expanding our, two of our existing high schools, Millbrook and Shrando, to accommodate the students and the education there. But the more we've moved this down the road, the more to the right on the timeline it goes, the more imperative it is that we get it. It's not a want, it's a need at this point. And the, the problem is, is in the county, we've seen the growth coming. We see it on the horizon, but we've not done anything to shore up our fort. When that happens now, all the water's rushing the gate, and we've got to do something to brace those walls. Do we keep putting Band-Aids on it, put more trailers out there, do an expansion where now we'll have to expand a cafeteria, things like that, that'll cost sixty percent of what it would cost to build a school as it is? That isn't financially responsible to the taxpayer. You know, I know there was a comment about, that was the first meeting that we've had with the Board of Supervisors, besides the individual meetings that we have with our respective counterparts on the Board of Supervisors. We've also had a meeting in the fall, where when we first brought up our CIP plan, it was just to expand, or for the fourth high school and the expansion at Middletown. And, you know, due to what some of the Board of Supervisors' concerns were at that time, we also wanted to go ahead and bring forward our Jordan Springs project. Then prior to that, we had a joint meeting downtown, and every time we've had another joint meeting, it's progressively gotten better amongst the two governing bodies. I, I can't pretend that one-hundred-and-fifty-one million dollars is not a lot of money. That's, that's, that's a lot of money. But it's not going to be all charged at once. We are doing everything we can to whittle away at that. Like, to Ms. Klein's point, we knocked off twelve million dollars on cuts already. We're looking at different ways of bidding this process out, whether it's design bid or CMAR process. We're looking at some of the, the expanded spaces that they call collaborative learning spaces, you know, that, who knows if they can even be really used because it's loud out in the hallways? Wouldn't that be better served as a classroom for that space, so we don't run into this same situation again? It's responsible spending with the tax dollar. So, yes, to Dr. Erskine's point, we're not going to go out there and put a Taj Mahal out there. We're going to put a practical design out there that can be expanded on later on, if need be, with all your facilities on the exterior walls of the building, so it can be knocked out and built on, instead of something where cafeterias or lunchrooms or whatever are on the interior and it's harder to, to expand without, you know, going back and redesigning the whole building. There's a lot of forethought going in this. Do we add lockers? Do we not? How do we expand that hallway space? Because we're fighting for every square inch. We're doing the best we can with what we've got here. Besides the seven-hundred-and-some-ish-thousand dollars that we gave back to the county, we've also, when we put forth our budget earlier, I know there was some cuts that we would all like to have had. It would have been a great want, but it wasn't a need. We cut two million dollars off with a free lunch program when we already feed all the students. We're not turning any student away at all, and we took that down from two million dollars to a hundred-and-some-thousand dollars. So please, continue to trust in us on what we're doing. We're looking at all those, we're putting all those tax dollars, all those incentives, different ways of funding this, places we can cut, places where, though, if we cut something, are we impacting a student's education? It's responsible cutting. You know, there's, there's so much we can do, and we want, and, you know, we'll have that, and, you know, we'll have that transparency along the way. Any community members who ever have any questions, comments, or concerns, please come, reach out to us. We'll, I'll go out to coffee with you, and we'll have an open conversation about this. Come to our Building and Grounds Committee meetings. You know, if you think that we don't need something in this new school, please bring it forward. We'd love to hear. Or if you have a better idea or know of any cheaper vendors who can get on that vendor list, please send them forward. So this is going to take a community effort, and we want to get everybody behind us on this. This isn't a left or right thing. This is a, we need to do this for our kids thing. But other than that, I have nothing else.
Any other board member comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Funius.
I have reservations on the new school. We, as a school board, have been handed this by previous administration. We are trying to review all the aspects involved. There have been many options stated, and being as we've only been doing this now since January, I feel that we're trying to find what's best for the constituents, but we've been handed this situation down from the previous administration, and the Board of Supervisors are the ones that handle the money, and we're asking for it. But I'm hoping that we can find the optimum options to make our money work what's best for us. We have an influx of new people coming in from all the counties. We're encouraging that, but we haven't been prepared for what but we haven't been prepared for what they've been doing so far zoning is concerned. We are trying our best to deal with the problem, and even though the can was kicked out to us, we are working towards a solution, but there's many factors involved, and it's not an easy situation. And I'm hoping that we can still look and find possibly another option that would be advantageous for our district. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
Thank you all for being here tonight, I'm glad to see that a few more people did come out. I appreciate all the comments that were made, all the concerns that you have were brought forth. I've received emails and phone calls from other constituents about this issue of the fourth high school specifically. But one thing that I want to try to bring light to, and Dr. Hummer, I may be putting you on the spot, and if you don't have an answer, it's okay. How many people and how long did it take you to come to the conclusion that a fourth high school was needed, and how long did you work on this particular thing before exhausting all avenues?
Well, as you all know, I put in about 80 hours a week, and there has been a lot of time that the team has put into this efforts. And when I first came, like you all, I wanted to take a look at the data to see if this was something that was truly needed. And the team, I entrusted the team, and Mr. Goodwin, when he came on board, to really dive into these numbers, to make sure that they were accurate. The other aspect of this was to build in the future developments, and that was something that I worked with the team on, to calculate into those projections, to make sure that we were providing you all in the community with accurate numbers of the direction we're going in, with a 10-year projection. So we worked hard at providing that information. So, Mr. Bell, there's really no way to determine exactly how long. I will share with you anecdotally that it's a lot, and this is something that we are dedicated to providing you all with the information you need to make an informed decision, but I would say that, in looking at Mr. Goodwin, a day does not go by where we're not talking about this, to make sure that we are doing it correctly, and making, as I keep sharing with you all, of building this school where we are fiscally responsible and good stewards of our dollar, but we're also not lowering the expectations of building a solid school where we're going to have to repair it every year as well. So we want to make sure that we build it up to those standards. So it's been quite some time, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. And in that vein, one of the things that I believe our school system has done for the first time in ever, is to provide the Board of Supervisors with a clear picture of why and what and when and where and how. Am I correct in that? As far as showing them what the CIP budget would be, as far as the operating budget and all of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The reason I bring this up is to let you know, anyone listening, those of you in the audience, is that this decision of a fourth high school isn't something that's just taken lightly. It's not something that, you know, we threw some paper against the wall and decided this is the number that we need, and we want to spend this amount of money. I don't believe that Dr. Hummer came from Stafford to here to spend all of Frederick County's dollars on schools. This is a project that's been in the works for seven years, at least. We bought the land, we've had the land, we pay taxes, no, we don't pay taxes on the land, we're a school, never mind. Do we pay taxes on the land?
No.
No, yeah, we're a school.
Because we are.
But the farmer that sold it to us gets to farm that land for free, part of the deal that we struck with him, until we actually start breaking ground. So it worked out really well for him. And I'm not disparaging him at all, it just is what it is. So this isn't a new problem, this isn't something that's just been thrown to us. We knew this was coming. Seven years ago, we tried to plan for it, we failed to. But if you look, as part of the CIP, you also have the expansion of Middletown and Jordan Springs. Now, that to me is smart business. We're looking at these two elementary schools that are overcrowded, but we're able to expand them instead of coming to the Board of Supervisors for two new elementary schools. Don't get me wrong, that's coming down the pike with the amount of growth that's occurring in Frederick County. And I hate to tell you, but you aren't going to stop it at this point. A point I tried to make at the work session was that we have this opportunity to expand these two elementary schools. We no longer have that opportunity for the fourth high school. That's done, that's gone, that's behind us. We can't turn back time. There are 25 to 30% overcapacity in Shorando alone, and I mentioned Shorando for two reasons. One, it's in my district, the Opecan district, and two, both of my children will now be going to Shorando. My son is a senior, my daughter will be a freshman. And they have 18 trailers. Now, I get that if we were to expand the school, if we even could, there would be more trailers, but that's not, sorry, I'm misremembering what I wanted to say. The point I'm trying to make is that, right now in Shorando, it's very difficult to move around about the halls. I've heard from so many people how difficult it is to even go to the bathroom, because when the bell rings, everyone flocks to the bathroom, and others don't get an opportunity to do this. If we could find another way to save money for the county, for the constituents, we would. I would. I don't want to pay more taxes. Two years ago, a decision was made by the Board of Supervisors to lower everyone's property tax from 61 cents to 51 cents, knowing full well, that's 10 cents per $100 that they dropped it. And I'm sure everyone was cheering and happy about this, as one would. But this is in full well knowing that we needed a fourth high school, that our elementary schools were starting to overcrowd, that we were growing as a county, and that more services were going to be needed. Now, here's the problem. We had a work session last week, but there was this invisible line that we were told we couldn't cross. Well, I call foul on that. That's something we should have talked about. Supervisor Dunn had some interesting ideas that he could have shared, but wasn't allowed to. And I'm disappointed about that. It was certainly okay for the Board of Supervisors to share their thoughts about how we should move students from one place to another, but we were not permitted or not supposed to have talked about where the money comes from, or where they're going to get the money. There's a simple solution. No one wants to say it, no one wants to think about it, but it's a simple solution. And that's not to say that you raise the taxes by 10 cents back to where it was two years ago, but you figure out a way to do so, so that we can pay for this, so that our students are safe in their building. There's a student that I know from when I taught at Ailer two years ago, he's in a wheelchair, and he's always in a wheelchair. God forbid that there's an emergency situation where he has to get out of that building very quickly, because of how crowded it is, and how difficult it is for him to get out of that building. So here's the deal. If we don't do something about this now, we're going to add more trailers. Those trailers aren't safe. They're safe if there's no problem, if there's no active shooter, if there's no hurricane or tornado or whatever, but we're going to add more trailers. And that's not a solution. A solution is the fourth high school. Now, if we could do it cheaper, I do believe that we would. I have the utmost respect for Ms. Klein, I have the utmost respect for Dr. Hummer and the other members of this board, that we have put our heads together, that we have worked together, that we have communicated. We don't always agree on everything, but we talk it out, and we try to listen and hear what the other person is saying. So with that, I will say that I will be supporting the fourth high school. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other board member comments, Ms. Martin?
Yes, please. I don't have a lot to say. I have been against this fourth high school since the beginning, primarily because of the economic situation in not only Frederick County, but the United States. However, the facts present themselves, that we have too many students, period. We've got to make more space for them. So we have to look at what's going on here. We've been told that Shorando is like impossible to try to build on to, because of the trailers. So where do you put these children in the meantime? If anyone can come up with a better solution, I'm all for it. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like that's going to happen. And we have to move forward. I only hope that they can come up with fundraising for this fourth high school that does not jeopardize the economic values of our common citizens, because we don't want to see people put out of their homes because they can't pay their taxes. That doesn't help the children either. So we're going to take this very seriously. I probably will vote no, just for, because I just feel that way. But I know that something has to be done, and I would hope as we're doing it, that we're going to take a real good look at everything that's presented to us, so that we build it as economically as we possibly can, but building it to sustain itself throughout the years, and to be acceptable to our community and to the students. We're going to try real hard this coming year to make that happen. We don't want to see anybody have to go through paying money that they feel like they're throwing away. But unfortunately, people live here, and we're going to have to do something.
Oh, goodie, it's me. As Ms. Klein said, we've only, most of us have only been here seven months, and I will tell you personally that I knew it was going to be a lot of work, but I was quite overwhelmed at first with the amount of work that has gone on in this. When I was campaigning, I was dead set against this high school. And I was sitting here when the previous board forwarded this resolution to the Board of Supervisors, and I thought, thank God, now it's off of my plate, I don't have to worry about it. But here we are today. I cannot wax poetic about numbers like the vice chair can, I'm just not a numbers guy, and I'm not going to lie to you. But part of the interesting thing for me, being the chair, I have gone out with Dr. Hummer on numerous occasions, and on my own, to these schools, and I have been to many schools this year, and I have seen firsthand the overcrowding in our schools. And there is no one in Frederick County who can't tell me that we are not overcrowded. If you are, you're delusional, I am sorry, and if that upsets you, I don't care. The schools are overcrowded. I'm sorry, it's the truth. I've heard, well, they're not overcrowded, I've been in those schools, I've seen the mess in the hallway, I've sat in the lunchrooms and watched all those kids. Over here, for crying out loud, they got to have lunch till almost 1:15 in the afternoon for all, to accommodate all the kids. That's ridiculous. I don't want to spend any more money than you. I can remember, I don't date myself, I can remember when the 70s, when the McDonald's commercial, and you get change back from your dollar. I take myself, my grandson, and my wife now to McDonald's, and it's darn near $50. It's better to go to a sit-down restaurant than it is to go to McDonald's. That's the price of living in Joe Biden's America. I'm sorry to say, that's what happens when you vote that kind of stuff in here, and you let people run rampant with your money. I don't want to pay any more money than you do. I'm on retirement, and I work part-time. I don't have thousands of dollars at my disposal to do stuff with, I got things I need to do that I can't get done, because I don't have the money either. But with that said, this has been an issue for, when did we buy that land?
2017, sir.
2017? It's been kicked down the road, it's been kicked down the road. Of course it costs more now. Why? Because everything costs more now. If we fail to act today, if the Board of Supervisors fails to act on whatever we come up with, it's going to cost more tomorrow, it's going to cost more next year. If we just decide to close our eyes and say, we're never going to do this, we're just going to kick the can down the road, Mr. SpaghettiOs here brought the can the other day. Sorry. I am not, and I'm not going to be boring, I'm just going to say it like it is, I'm just a redneck, I can't help it. We keep kicking the can down the road, next year it's going to be 200 million, the year after it's going to be 250 million. I read the article today, I meant to bring it with me, I left it on my desk at work today. We approved more building permits this year, in the first half of this year, than we have in many years, is that not correct? Is that not what was written in your paper? It's not going to get any better. It's going to get worse. I drive from here to Manassas three days a week to work part-time. It takes me an hour and a half to get to work, because I have to bob and weave through all the people that have moved from Fairfax and Prince William County to Frederick County, because it's cheaper. Drive up 66 in the morning, you tell me how many people are here. People that I work with in Manassas that live down here, because it's cheaper, to live down here. I've been, there's been a lot of lies about this school, a lot of lies been told about me, a lot of lies been told about her. I'm not a conservative, I voted for the school, which I never voted for the school, but I'm not a conservative, how dare you, you, I, the two people that I love in this world are both gone, and that's Ronald Reagan and Rush Limbaugh, I am as conservative as I can be. I don't want to spend money on nothing. I don't believe in it. I would rather, I had a 2007 Kia Rondo until I sold it for $500, when I got another 2012 car, drove it every day, had a 97 Ford Ranger, drove it every day to Manassas. I don't have money to shell out for new stuff. I'd love to have a Cadillac Escalade, but I've got a Kia budget, amen? Oh, God, he said amen again. But I'm here to tell you, I was against this high school, and I know people that have told me, we don't want you to vote for it, we don't, I don't want my taxes raised either. I can't afford it either. But if we don't do something now, it's not going to get any better. And again, this week, it's $45 for three people to eat at McDonald's, what's it going to be six months from now? It's not getting any better. Prices are not coming down, they're only going up. So, like I said, I can't wax poetic like some of these folks, I'm just an old redneck, but that's what I had to say, so. With that said, we have had a motion to approve the CIP, and it has been properly seconded. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Erskine.
Aye.
Mr. Fuedes.
No.
Mr. Atkins.
Aye.
Mr. Bell.
Aye.
Ms. Martin.
No.
Ms. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Sturtevant.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
The motion passes.
Okay, now we have new business.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. We have two contract awards before you this evening, I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Camery here in a second. I just wanted to share with you that these would typically go through the Finance Committee, but just due to the summer months of July, we did not have an opportunity to have a Finance Committee, but due to the time sensitivity of these two projects, we wanted to present those to you all this evening for approval, and it is above the $200,000, in which I cannot approve without, or move forward with, without your approval. So with that, I'm going to have Mrs. Camery just chime in on some specific details of these two projects. We also have Mr. Davis here in the audience, he can answer any specific questions that you have, as well as Mr. Goodwin and myself as well. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Camery to just provide you some basic information on these two projects.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. So, board members, you'll see before you, we're asking for your approval to award to Stadium Solutions Incorporated, a contract award for $415,000 to, for the James Wood Middle School outside bleachers. We are getting to this contract through a cooperative, so... So that means that we have researched the pricing, and we found a cooperative that's already out there that gives us better pricing, so we're writing a contract in order to get to this. We would like to do, start this project this summer. And as Dr. Hummer just said, Mr. Davis is here in the audience, if you need any specifics about the project itself.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I'd like to call Mr. Davis for it. Mr. Davis.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming out and answering some questions. Question about the bleachers over there. Is it something where we got, got repair and replace, or can we just repair certain areas?
So currently, the bleachers are concrete, pre-cast concrete. They're not up to code, they're not up to ADA, they're not very, I mean, they're stable, they're concrete, they're not going to go anywhere, but they're, they're nowhere near code. So that's really the, the basis to get safety and to get up to code here.
So the best way we can do it financially?
Yes. I feel strongly about that.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Question. Since they're not up to code, that opens us up to civil liability, should someone get injured? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one follow-up question.
Sure.
So this is for replacement, or is this to retrofit what's there?
We're going to leave the concrete bleachers in place for cost and build over top and around and fence around, so they will not be exposed. You can't touch them, can't get in there or anything.
Having spent a lot of time supervising kids on those bleachers, thank you. I appreciate that very much. The follow-up question there, is this for encasing them in the, the new bleachers and the fencing, or are those separate?
No, this does the bleachers and the fencing. And also, we have to put, I think, 82 footers in place as well, to hold the bleachers in place, so, so, yeah, it's a full package.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board approve the contract award for the bleacher replacement at James Wood Middle School to Stadium Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $415,000.
Second. Motion has been made that we accept this, and it has been, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion by the Board? All those in favor? Or do we need a roll call?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend, since it's budget, to...
All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Erskine.
Aye.
Mr. Funes.
Aye.
Mr. Atkins.
Aye.
Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Sturtevant.
Yes.
Motion passes.
A motion carries, and we have one more contract award.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So members of the Board were also asking to approve, through a cooperative as well, another project to diversified educational systems. This is for a dust collecting system, a replacement over at James Wood Middle School for the tech ed and ag lab, in the amount of $225,820.
Mr. Chairman, do we have somebody here who can speak to specifics? Sorry, I should have asked you to just stay, but...
Come on down.
So, also being familiar with this particular system, and nearly having gone deaf by it, I've got a couple of questions. This is a quarter million dollars. Is this completely replacing? And if so, is it, I mean, this is urgent, it needs to be done right now? I mean, we've been kind of limping it along for a while.
Correct. The one, it's, just to be clear, it's two systems, not just one. It's for the ag and the...
Tech ed.
Tech ed.
Shop, yeah.
Yeah. So it's for two systems, and they're dilapidated, they're not safe. And again, this is another safety issue, and to correct something that's not working properly.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Sir, I have a question for you. Is this a requirement that we should have in a school? Like, does it have to be in the school, or can you have the, these classes without it?
You cannot have these classes without this equipment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Any other questions from the Board? Thank you again.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Chair, I move that the Board approve the contract award for the tech and ag lab dust collector system at James Wood Middle School to diversified educational systems incorporated in the amount of $225,820.
Second.
Okay, so a motion has been made to approve and has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Erskine.
Aye.
Mr. Funes.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Sturtevant.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and that concludes, oh, sorry. That concludes the new business. Are there any Board member comments? Hearing none, I will make one more comment that I did not make earlier, and that is concerning Dr. Hummer. When he says, "We want to be good stewards of our dollar," he is, that is exactly what he is about. We have all got on this man to knock it off, because he stays here Saturday, Sunday. He's always texting, he's always emailing, he's always working. He is looking for ways to cut that budget. And matter of fact, you cut how much this last year?
It's about $450,000.
That we gave back to the county, correct?
Yes, sir.
So when he says, "I'm trying to be a good steward of the dollars," I believe him, because I've watched him do it. So, and that's the other part, I meant to say that earlier, but I, I just, just know that if you're a Frederick County citizen, we're not out here on our white horse going yee-haw, riding around trying to spend everybody's money, because we are doing the best we can to be good stewards of the dollar, as Dr. Hummer has said. And that's it for me. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I'll be very short. I just have one comment to those of you that are listening and in the audience, and hopefully the Board of Supervisors. We've just passed the CIP to you. We've given you all of the information that we have at our disposal. We know this is a big ask. We know this could be a hardship for some. But a bigger hardship would be for us not to do anything about it and to continue to kick the SpaghettiOs down the road. Thank you, Miles, for that.
Anytime.
But in all seriousness, we're here in this county and in this community together, and we have to work together. And I urge you, I implore you, please approve the fourth high school. Thank you.
Any other Board member comments? Hearing nothing? The next school board meeting will be August 20th, 2024. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn the meeting this evening.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.